I would call this meeting the Upper County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer. And in remembrance of the September 11, 2001 victims, we would like to have you hold them in your meditation as well. Only for the two twin towers that were struck about 8:47, I believe, at 8:03 on that morning.
For your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation at 9:15 by Sandra Phillips. I'm sorry. Tina, a lot of thoughts going on today.
The County Commission of Upper County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, August 28, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Donnie Tenney, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Kelly Cunningham, County Administrator, Kelly Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, and Tony Newman, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 21, 2014, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the Commission approved the request from C.E.O.S. to hold a mini fair on the courthouse plaza on Friday, September 12, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the Commission approved the appointment of full-time telecommunicator Henry McDonald at the rate of $10 per hour effective September 8, 2014, as recommended by Steve Lindger, Director. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenney, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of full-time Deputy Sheriff William Chister at the rate of $16 per hour effective September 7, 2014, as recommended by David Kaufman, Sheriff. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenney, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of tri-county child exchange monitor Suzie Thayer effective September 1, 2014. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Correspondence from Paul Richter, Buchanan River watershed requesting a letter of support in reference to the swamp run project. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the Commission approved the letter of support. Correspondence from Ron Hooton, West Virginia Division of Highways, District 7 Manager regarding planned maintenance for the Frenchton Road. Upper County E-911 Communication Center reports for July 2014, monthly call summary report, monthly departmental summary report, monthly and year-to-date record report. Agendas and/or notices of meetings, Upper County Solid Waste Authority, September 8, 2014. Meeting minutes nonetheless listed. Meetings as listed. Appointments needed are upcoming as listed. At 9:30 a.m., Machine White Hair Executive Director, Region 7 Planning and Development Council appear before the Commission and presented information regarding the land and water conservation fund grant for a waterside indoor splash pad at the Upper County Pool. The council will work with the county administrator to research and plan for the grant. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and old refunds as listed. At 11:00 a.m., the Commissioners accepted the ALS ice puppet challenge on the courthouse plaza. The Commission challenged the other elected officials. With no further business, on motion by Donnie Tenney, seconded by Troy Brady, adjourned at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Tina. Motion to amend or... If you want to... That's... Red? Second. I want favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Okay. We start a few minutes before our first speaker. First item for discussion, action, and approval. Resignation of Jody O'Martin, E-911 telecommunicator, effective September 12, 2014. Is there a motion to approve that resignation?
So moved.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Approval of advertisement for full-time, part-time E-911 communications, telecommunicators at three to $10 per hour. Is there a motion to approve that?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Next, resignation Jason O'Quinn Deputy Sheriff, effective September 15, 2014. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
Seconded.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. One of the full-time Deputy Sheriff Sean Jeffrey Kendrod, effective September 21, 2014, at the rate of $16 per hour, increasing to $16.31 per hour after completion of required training. Is there a motion to approve that employment?
Seconded.
Second.
Yes.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Next, approval of Tax Department Volunteer Luke Elliott Blake, effective September 18, 2014. I assume, again, Tax Department Volunteer, that is a non-paid position?
That's correct.
An approval of that request.
So moved. Second. Is that a college student?
I believe it was.
It's like a intern.
He worked in the Anson's office last year as well.
Oh, okay. I remember meeting him. It's good.
Okay. Is there a motion to... Okay, we have that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Next, appointment of full-time Public Control Officer John Slaughter, effective September 15, 2014, at the rate of $9 per hour and increasing to $9.50 per hour after completion of required training. Is there a motion to approve that appointment?
Seconded.
Second. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have, next seven and eight, we have combined together. We have motions for authorization Kelly Cunningham, Administrator, and Kerry Wallace, Assistant Administrator, to use J.C. Rafferty's official signature stamp to sign required documentation to have the Upper County Commission. A motion to approve both of those recommendations.
Seconded.
Yes, I understand. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of poll workers, alternates in Emergency Ballot Commission, actually November 4, 2014, general election. If you've had time to review that list of individuals provided to us by the county clerk, is there a motion to approve those individuals?
Seconded.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. Next, we have approval of software assistance maintenance contract effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, with all maintenance levels remaining the same as last year. And the next item, approval of environmental systems research contract effective September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2015. I would ask that Kerry Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, provide overview to the Commission on those particular contracts.
These are both general contracts. The first one runs on a fiscal year, and we were reviewing it, and that's why it hasn't been set in yet. It's for all of our AS400 software. Software Systems maintains that, so we have to sign a contract. And the second is for our license to use our editor's software that Terry Joe uses for E-911. That doesn't happen.
And those contracts have passed proof suitable, and they've responded to any requests we have relative to maintenance and whatnot?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve either or both of those contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Both of them. Second, both of them.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. We next have approval and signature Emergency Management Program, Project Program, Subcontract Grant Application, 2014, runs an amount of $34,702 submitted by the Office of Emergency Management Supervisor, James Perry. Is there a motion to approve that grant application?
You might explain exactly why all this is going to be used.
Well, it says here it's for training.
I meant for the public. I read it, but I didn't talk to the public. The public's been... So they understand.
Okay. Let's wait a second. It's on page... Page 36, 27. That's a grant involving Department of Land Security Emergency Management of the planning organization. There's equipment for 1,000. Organization meeting the emergency management facility itself, $32,000. Training is $250. They have an annual exercise that's required, which $500, or a total of $1,000. It's requested $66,000 total, but we will have natural funds for much of this, about an amount of $34,706. So the total that will be utilized will be $69,408, of which Department of Land Security will provide half of that, $34,702. The others will be paid for by the county. Natural funds. So you have a motion to approve that grant request.
Seconded.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries. We have one more minute. Order extending time of settlement state percentage was agreed for 4-14. The State Department found corrigs recommendation, approve the extension of that estate by the fiduciary commission of day up beside of right.
Seconded.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. That motion carries. Okay, next we have on our agenda at 9:15, Sandra Phillips, who is a resident of Upper County, wishes to make a complaint concerning an issue that is a concern there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you, I pass out some pictures. I have a complaint concerning gray water, which is runoff from gutters as well as inside sinks and the oil that is being drained. You can see, this one is a recent picture of the different colorization of the grass. The next couple are closer pictures that were probably about three months ago. What has happened since my complaint, since the garage flooded, my garage flooded, was that they just buried this pipe in the ground. And as you can see by this picture, if you drive by the house, you can see the discoloration. It is still, the water is still draining down back behind my garage.
Who's they? I mean, who's the they?
This is Fetties Lawn Water Service. And you can also see that there are, where there are, I call them ditch pipes. There's a picture of my house on the corner and Fetties' house, and you can see the white pipes that are in the ditch that are normally drained, when you drain gray water. And there are pictures of flooding of the garage. And I would like to respectfully request that the Commission pass something in the county, because this is still in the county, on Foster Street, that they pass something concerning gray water.
Have you talked with the owners of the business to...
Yes, yes.
...research your concerns and what is the response of it?
Yes. Their response was that they just buried that pipe in the ground and left it. It's still kind of drained. I mean, it's still kind of let back there.
I understand that since you discussed this with the county administrators, they've had a chance to research county ordinances, and what is the issue there in county ordinances? Do we have any jurisdiction, or do we have any authority to intercede in this issue?
I mean, I'm not, I know we don't have a county ordinance currently, and I am not sure that that is an issue we can address. I have not got to fully explore that yet, because I wasn't fully... I know it was a runoff issue that she was concerned about and was wanting the County Commission to consider addressing that.
Well, I noticed there's oil. I noticed there was, what appeared to be oil in the photographs. Is this something that the Department of Natural Resources, some statute or state regulation, to address this?
Well, that would be a question I would have. Has DEP been contacted or DNR about the runoff?
No, I did not know who to go to in order to address this.
If something involving the environment, if there is a, if it is oil, if it is ruled a contaminant, that may have some bearing on authority to intercede on your behalf. Lacking that, you have an issue where you can file a personally retained counsel to represent you in legal action. That's always certain, always your right. In terms of the county interceding, I might have to do some more research, but apparently, at least on the surface, it does not appear that there is any ordinance that involves or gives us authority to intercede on your behalf. Now, you're asking if we would consider passing such ordinance. That would be something we'd have to do some research on, whether we have the authority to do that or not. If there is, of course, if there's a state authority that also handles that, that would be a more logical venue for your resolution. But does any of the commissioners have any observations or comments of your experience? Glad to hear this come across when you were deputy, so to know these matters.
I would concur with checking with DNR up to game point. I'm sure they could lead you in the right path on who to call, you know what I mean, to take care of this problem. Runoff, it's hard to do anything with runoff, but when you get into the oils and stuff like that, there are some guidelines on that.
Now, the oil, the picture of the oil, is that in your garage floor?
No, that's water in my garage.
Okay. I thought you were talking about the discoloration of the oil. Was that not...
No, the discoloration is in the grass. You can see the grass here. There's oil.
Do you believe that's oil?
Well, mine are too. I mean, I kind of...
It may be...
And that's coming out of drains?
Yes. Now, like I said, he has now plugged that back in the ground, so I have to dig up the ground again in order to find this. But it's just, the drain is just stuck in the ground, and that's where it goes.
Well, maybe something for DNR.
And where is it in relationship to this picture? Is it in the middle of this, between the tree and your fence?
Yes, it's between the two sets of trees. They have cut the one tree down.
Okay, so that's where it comes in? That's where the end of the pipe is?
Yes. Yes. And you can see the discoloration of the grass and how it comes down through. And that's just the water. The oil won't go very far.
And is your property line where the fence is, it goes up to your garage?
My, yes. My property, no, my property line is actually three foot over into his concrete driveway that he put in last fall.
So where's your driveway in relationship to the trees?
My driveway is right here in front of my garage.
I meant your property line.
Oh, my property line, my property line includes these last three trees. It's only about a few inches, but by the time you get to the road, it's deep, but...
Okay. Well, I do know, being, having property that's below the road, that it's an issue, if you live down below, and you're the receiver, runoff water, whatever, rain, then that's something that, I've even talked to the Department of Highways, and, you know, as far as them putting carpets in the road, and they say that they have the responsibility to ensure that the roads are maintained, and if water comes onto your property from the ditch line, that's for you to deal with. And I know I've spent thousands of dollars putting drain pipes in to drain water down to the crigs, so that it doesn't come through my property. And you've mentioned, you actually mentioned two things. You mentioned water coming from the drains, the downstream, down from the buildings.
And the inside, and the inside, there is a sink inside that also drains down into the, the water drain.
So you're saying that the sink inside just drains out onto the grass? It doesn't go into the system?
Yeah. Same thing, the drains in front of the buildings comes into this drain here, it drains onto me. And you did mention about my responsibility for the water. I have $14,000 worth of basement systems underneath my house to stop the problem from runoff from the hill. That's not the problem. The problem is, it's behind this garage that comes off the hill from directly from that building. And there was a drain before he closed off, well, before I took possession of the house in October last year. He had concreted his driveway. There was a grid across there that actually blocked the water. He concreted that all over. So the water actually does nowhere else to run now but onto, not only from the driveway now, but I'm assuming that this has always been there.
And what was, in your discussions with the owner, what was the response? You explained all this to him, or you should have explained to us? And what was the response?
Well, concerning the survey, he thought he had the survey, and he doesn't have a survey, and I paid for the survey. And again, he said he would fix the problem when it comes to drains, you know, so it wouldn't drain back. Oh, man, I just told him, I said, just drain it to the ditch like you've done everything else, you know, since it's down along that concrete driveway that I own three foot up. And he didn't do that. He just put the, right down into the ground at about three foot out, and that's it, and covered it up.
When was the last time you had discussions with him?
Probably about a month ago, before I brought this up. And I had brought this before the Commission, because when I lived in Ohio, this was also county issues, and they passed ordinance at that time. And I didn't know where else to take this. I don't want to cause hard feelings with the neighbor and stuff, but I had no idea, because, you know, basement systems can't do anything for runoff from a neighbor. You know, I've done everything I can do financially in this to protect, I mean, my crawl space in my house, and it's fine now. And I actually put an extra sub on, and it runs longer because of the runoff from this.
Because of the oil, maybe it might be something that Safe Sites and Structures can do. We'll have to look into that ordinance and see if that will be included or not.
Well, we can look into what, if there's any county ordinance. See, the problem in West Virginia, now, maybe different than other states, the only authority the State of West Virginia gives counties basically is issues they don't want to deal with, to put it bluntly. And one of the reasons that the benefit of the state passing ordinances is that then anywhere in the state, everybody knows exactly what the ordinance is. If it's up to each individual counties, then it could carry from county to county. But as long as there's some state agencies that deal with issues like this, then they're not going to, they're not going to give any authority to counties to deal with. I would say Kerry and Kelly can check and see if the Safe Sites and Structures did something that would apply. Otherwise, you might check with Department of Natural Resources, and they could probably give you some guidance on exactly what course you're actually going to take.
Because the oil is, is, most likely considered a pollutant, and that would give them some authority to make some recommendations or to enforce some statutory requirements.
Hopefully, that helped you a little bit. Here, you want your picture back with any of your hands?
Thank you.
Here, we do have some numbers here for you, too, for the DEP, and then I have your number, so I can get back to you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's not quite 9:30, but we're ready. So we move to information. We have correspondence from David W. Colley, City Attorney, Friday, 5/4, for annexation of the Frenchton Road. And that property relates to acreage adjacent to the cinema, Upper Valley Cinema, I think it's called. It was a, actually, by petition, because the owners of the property are requesting it to be incorporated into the city. And we've been notified by the city of the action taken to annex that property. Do I have a motion to approve the county's recognition of that annexation?
I have a couple questions on that first, and Terry Joe's left. But thank you, ladies, to know, is that the area that we've had the problems with the filling?
No, no, I don't believe it.
That's not that...
So it's adjacent to the ADS auto repair, auto insurance. They want to expand their facilities, my understanding.
To my knowledge, it did not include that area.
Yeah. Okay. Adjacent, it's adjacent to the salvage yard insurance.
So it would be on the other side of the...
I believe that you look at, the cinema is on the right hand.
On the right side, where this property is on the left. We're sure of that?
I think that Terry Joe, if you'd like to help her...
Well, just, just like, exactly what the...
Location is.
Yeah, the location. And I'm not sure, Kelly, you might enlighten us on the, this aspect of annexation, if the, if the land that is requested be annexed, I think, I don't think we have anything in it. I think we just have to approve it.
I believe what I said was, from my and Mr. Rafferty's discussions earlier, it's once the land under requested, not really anything.
Right. Because it really doesn't, it doesn't, the county doesn't leave anything. Actually, the property owner is going to be paying taxes now on the city, and will have some benefits from the city. Terry Joe, now to throwback. My only question was, is this property, you're familiar with the property that's being requested to be annexed?
Yes.
And it's, it's not the area where it's been filled?
Well, the area that they're wanting to annex in has been filled, but that's not the one that I had previously brought to you.
It's not the one on the left side as you go down?
No. If you're looking at the cinema theater, it's going to be the property to the right between the theater and the auto auction place. That's the property that they're proposing annexing, and I think it's about five acres. Now, there's still some talk about doing that that's to the left that has been previously filled, but that's maybe a future annexation.
I didn't see any annex. Well, that was a question I had, and now I guess now would be a good time to ask it, since we don't want to keep the sheriff waiting. If that is annexed, then does that take an Alabama purview?
100%.
Okay. Then it's the city's issue as far as any filling or flood control.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was another question I had. So this is, this is, this is to expand the salvage yard? Is that the purpose of this, as far as we know?
I don't know.
That's what I meant to talk.
Okay. All right. I just want some clarity. I'm not against economic, like, anything squared in my heart. I would move then we approve it. I would second that.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved. It is now 9:30. We have Sheriff David Kaufman, two of the deputy sheriffs, to the public and to the Commission.
Thank you, commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, media. Morning, ladies. Uh, first of all, I'd like to start by just thanking you for approving my request. You know, we lost Deputy Kennedy back last month, and I sent a written request in for approval to hire Tyler Chister. Stand up, Tyler. Young man, if you approve, I think you'll be a great asset to our department. He's from the southern end of the county, has a lot of ties here. Of course, we got to get through the academy. I think that's going to take back the next class, January 5 through April 24. So...
Off in the bully. So someone will be entering him, I assume, and the deputy will be guiding him through the mission phases?
Yes. Right now, we've got a mannequin in the uniform. But we're, we're going to quickly change that. The other gentleman here is Sean Comrade. How do you pronounce that? Sean Comrade. Okay. Stand up, Sean. This is a gentleman that I brought...
Turn around there, guys, a little bit so the camera can see you. So, so now over here. Back there. I got to the camera. There you go.
And it's my wish and desire, of course, you are aware, that we're losing Deputy Jason Queens, his letter of resignation, first of September. So with interviews and backgrounds, and I think it's our best choice, and it's my request, for you gentlemen to allow me to hire Sean to fill our case's position.
We approved that previously at this hearing.
Good morning.
You didn't get that...
Did you all that event through?
Well, I appreciate that.
We appreciate you bringing up and introducing him.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time.
It's a shame you... It's a shame you have to hire them in pairs, because when they leave in pairs, you have to replace them.
And it's our goal, I mean, it's really going to, it's going to be tough on the sheriff's department, but we hope to get both these gentlemen in the same class in January, and get them through there hopefully by Strawberry Festival next year will be, will be better position.
Someone advised me that I would feel much older when I saw these gentlemen come in, and I have to say, I am feeling bad very much. Very young, lovely appearance, I'm certain, very knowledgeable, very dedicated, I'm certain they'll be fine officers, fine deputies. But, yeah, I think many of them, I'm tired of them.
For some reason, it doesn't have that effect on me. I didn't want to watch.
I assume many have the same recognition that I do. Well, welcome over, gentlemen. Thank you for your, your willingness to serve, and that's important to me, we need good law enforcement.
I got your belt.
I can present an occasion, if I need one to pursue our career. It's an honorable career, it's one that I loved, I know it's one that Commissioner Brady loved, and I don't mind saying that, I've told people here, and I miss it every day. I miss it every day. But you'll do well in your service.
Thank you, sir.
You have some good, you have some good officers to serve with, too.
I do want to personally wish you both the best. I was a deputy in this county for over thirty-six years. You will have some moments where people walk up and pat you on the back and say thank you, sometimes it is a thankless job. I do wish you both the very best, and good luck in your venture.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff.
See you guys later. Good luck.
Do you want to get some photographs?
Oh. Well, I am reading, you're not reading.
She's going to go down, too. Don't let him run off, she wants to.
Okay.
He wanted to get his picture in the back of the picture.
Yeah.
Next, we have first class from Jeff Palmer, Association of West Virginia Solid Waste Authorities Chair, an invitation to attend the twenty-fourteen West Virginia Education Conference on Literate Control and Solid Waste Management, taking place October nineteen through twenty-one, twenty-fourteen, at the Pullman Plaza in Arlington, West Virginia.
Anyway, I don't think I can make that, but we might want to send Carrie down here to represent us.
I think she's already identified someone, but we wish you all.
What do we have in that?
What do you think, sir?
In the solid waste meeting?
I don't know, we probably have some of the solid waste.
I'd say, I mean, it starts the county.
I don't think that we would have the necessity to do that.
Yeah.
So I just recognize that that correspondence is received and be processed by the administrators. Next, we have also correspondent from Robert C. Horn, Department of Media and Resource Services Managing Director, State and Local Affairs, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Information Open House, which is to be conducted Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty-fourteen, from four o'clock P.M. to eight o'clock P.M. at the Greek Alumni Room and Performing Arts Center lobby on the West Virginia Wesleyan College campus. This relates to the pipeline that has been proposed to travel from West Virginia through Virginia, I believe, and North Carolina, purposes of delivering natural gas. I think it is a forty-two inch pipeline that's going to propose, forty-two inch. And so this is an opportunity for the public and for public officials, and potential public officials, to attend and receive information concerning the proposal. I know I've been in contact by member residents who are going to attend the meeting for informational purposes. So I would suggest that anyone, and media in particular, alert the public to this meeting so that there will be good attendance, and if there are questions concerning the route, safety, or other issues that deal with environmental issues that deal with such a pipeline, that they attend this meeting.
I believe, I mean, it was.
Next, we have Usher County, eight-nine-one-one Communications Center report for August, and we have a building permit report for August, NACO prescription drug discount program for August, and we have some kind of children's festival, which should be held on Saturday, September twentieth, at the Stocker Youth Center from ten to two P.M., excuse me, ten A.M. to two P.M. That's always a fantastic opportunity for parents and children to spend some time enjoying, we are the big children, enjoying a fair and participating in many of the activities which the youth are involved in. Now, we have also another moment of silent meditation scheduled, a remembrance of the victims aboard American Airlines Flight Number seventy-seven. That airline was the, airlander was the aircraft that crashed into the Pentagon on September eleventh, twenty thousand and one. So we will have a moment of silent meditation to reflect on those victims. I think that.
I might add that there was a little over five million dollars in building permits issued in Usher County.
Right.
Although four made them as one project, but still, that's, that's, that's good growth in Usher County. I don't know if we, I saw where Bloose County is going to get some major activity on the, in the drilling, we're on gas well next year. Is the president covering all that? How many, someone was telling me how many pads Chesapeake said were going to be drilled on Bloose County, was it forty or eighty wells, pads? That was a tremendous amount, and so it'd be interesting to see if any of that activity's going to spill over into Usher County. Might talk to Mr. Cunningham with Chesapeake.
There's also another drilling company that's operating up Usher County, and that's Panther Drilling Company. So we are standing ours. We do have some bills to pay, but we have another moment of silence scheduled for ten oh three, that are meeting, we recess prior to that.
Ladies, ladies.
We should have additional information.
Did any one of you, you are busy there, when we were talking about the solid waste story, did you one of you want to go to the Pullman Plaza today?
I think I'm not.
Really softly, if Carrie, you'd like to go down, I'll take your family with you.
I'm afraid I'm going to be busy during that time, Frank.
Okay. Might try a bread for the morning.
What would be the case, you will.
Might announce the children's festival.
Oh, did, I didn't hear that.
Did you hear that, Rick?
Yeah, but there's about two other events going on, I couldn't notice that last page, it's going to be a busy weekend.
Yeah, my, my.
Very last.
And the last festival Friday, too.
That'll be the last festival Friday, we're going to have the children's festival, you got an arts festival, you've got the open house for the Mechanic Public Service Center.
And Rick is, because Donnie can't make that next meeting at the Stocker Youth Center in October, I will talk to him.
We have a meeting for the floor.
Yes, those are all.
Rick wants to say something.
You know, Buddy brings up a really good point, and Donnie, you know.
Let's have some stretching air and speaking.
As much as we've appreciated Donnie's input with Stocker Youth Center for all the years that he's been donating his time and giving his great advice and support on that center, I've got to tell you that Mr. Brady has been fulfilling those shoes quite mightily, and he's been doing a great job, and I would ask in the future here soon that perhaps Mr. Brady would reconsider to replace Mr. Teddy on that aboard. I know it's probably inappropriate for me to ask now, but I just wanted the commissioner to be aware, and the public to be aware of the input and the effort that Mr. Brady has put into the Stocker Youth Center and his, his unique perspective on issues and decisions and ways that the process could be done. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and appreciate, make sure that everybody knows that the Stocker Youth Center appreciates everything Donnie's done, but we really do appreciate what Mr. Brady's been doing as well, so, for your consideration.
You've been elected office for what, three months now, four months, you already are, assuming the position of, of a political spokesperson.
Well, I knew.
I would very appreciate of that.
Don't stop, it may be the only thing I do right to do. Well, I knew, I knew what Buddy would bring to that Stocker board, and that's why part of my mentoring process, J.C. and Buddy, so the next year, then they'll be able to step right into those positions. So I decided who I'm going to recommend to the other, all the other positions that I serve on.
Those decisions are made after you've signed.
Well, since Mr. Brady brought it up, I thought it would be, you know, only appropriate.
That's a great thing.
This is the first meeting.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Buddy, I might say that on Buddy's behalf, he has enjoyed serving on that Stocker board, and I knew that he would bring some, some very good positive energy to that board, and that's why I kind of mentored him into that.
You're right on the demo, Donnie.
Thanks, Rick.